Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of January 19th. We're starting early this evening because we're going directly into executive session. First, you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Solicitor, could you walk us through?
The motion would be to convene an executive session pursuant to what our general was 4246582 litigation with regard to the case Cabral versus Bristol.
Salute second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will leave back after executive session. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of January 19th. We started in executive session, but we're going to start the regular meeting now. So I'm going to ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. We are back to, we'll call it hybrid Zoom meetings at the moment. Obviously, we're following the governor's executive order. Kind of housekeeping for us here this evening. We are close to the public, but obviously the public has access through Zoom. And I know that we have more than a few people watching this evening. And welcome to all, to my colleagues, as if we're speaking, if you could lower your mask, it'll help all hear you better. But once we're done speaking, if you could use your mask again, as we have an edict here at town hall and all our public buildings. And welcome to all, to my colleagues, as if we're speaking, if you could lower your mask, it'll help all hear you better. But when, once we're done speaking, if you could use your mask again, as we have an edict here at Town Hall and all our public buildings. To start, I'm going to ask, as we normally do, to go with the clerk, but I'm going to ask for an additional agenda item and to move one forward. But if we could just start with our consent in many minutes, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, and I'd like to pull DT one just for further discussion. And we can discuss at the end of the meeting if you'd like, Chairman.
That was DD one.
DD one.
Thank you. So we'll pull that and we'll have, actually, I'll ask, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll have that at the end of the meeting, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes. We have town council meeting from December 22nd. And we also have the executive session minutes also from December 22nd.
Motion to approve previous minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, so now I'd like, please, a motion to move I seven forward to the beginning.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we'll add the agenda item after this. Thank you all for for doing this. Well, I wanted to move this forward. This is key information, and obviously, we would have covered it later in the meeting. But I thought it was important, I think we all do, and appropriate to have this discussion now. Mr. Administrator, could you enlighten on what we've received, the information that you've gotten, and what we've done with those test kits, please?
So we got, as you may have heard, the governor announced five hundred thousand residents. And how we are following federal guidelines. So the test, they come test, test kits are allotted by the population. So Bristol's allotted to six thousand eight hundred and forty. And we have certain eligibility rules and groups that we can provide those into the general first group or serve to the general population. Some of the groups, for example, are schools, medical facilities, health equity zones. So what we did is so we reached out to our local schools and five thousand of those test kids. School and also our so that children come back from their fifth grade, they'll be tested in all areas. So additional test kits that we have, the remainder are then allotted to the Bristol Health Equities. Child senior housing. Lord moderate. So the distribution is following guidelines. Studying I chief those test kits right now. The other good news is our residents working for a home test. They are at pharmacies, most all insurance plans will cover the cost of them. So any new pharmacy tests, they have test kits there. The testing center by appointment is of five madam, six fifty five madam. And the portal for that is online. So the point is portal dot ri dot com. And that is also the covidtest dot com, which is mail to your home test kit. That is covidtest dot com, you order. Tests caused by federal government. Outline where the test kits are available. Our website, Bristol ri dot com.
Any questions for the administrator?
Thank you for the update.
Mr. Administrator, thank you. I know that you've, I was here at Town Hall a little bit early today. I know that your office and I know a lot of offices received a lot of questions about this. So I wanted to make sure, and that was perfect, to share the information with the public. Just need to root a motion receiving file, please.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to receive a file. Is there any other dialogue? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. As I mentioned, I wanted to add an agenda item, and that would be, if we could have a motion to add an agenda item to recognize a passing of one of our board members and also actually someone connected with the town. Have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So first, Madam Clerk, if you could help me with the pronunciation, I apologize because, and if you don't know, I wasn't clear. I found it was a French last name, and I didn't want to do it incorrectly. So no, it's okay. So I'll pull it up just in a moment. So we had a passing of a board member. And we also had a passing of Mike Davis's daughter. Mike Davis is, he refers to himself as his stage name, Mike Davis. His actual last name is McGonigal. His daughter passed away, a teacher in Cranston, if my memory is correct, and I apologize if I have that incorrect, but certainly she passed. She passed recently. It was right around our last meeting, and we did not know that until afterwards. And we wanted to say to Mike and his family and his friends that our hearts go out to him, to his family and his friends on a on a on a loss that is, she was not very old. And also to our board member who recently passed away, who's also not very old. And we, our hearts go out, and I'm, I apologize for not being able to say his last name correctly. I feel horrendous. So no, okay. I hope I'm saying that correctly, and I apologize if I'm not. But certainly, our hearts and our thoughts go out to him, his family, his friends for loss. We often talk at this council, and we're going to do a little bit later on in the agenda of our thanks to boards and commission members who put their time, effort, and energy in. And this is a classic example of someone who gave back to the town, this council in this town says, thank you. Thank you all for that. I appreciate it.
I may briefly, assuming individual, I do recall when he first moved into town. And he actually asked to meet with me and find out how he could get involved. And and he certainly did. He was very helpful on the capital commission and certainly did a great job and provided quite a bit of expertise. So but it was interesting when he first moved into town to really approach and say, I want to get involved, and so he did. But our prayers with the family.
Okay, no motion is necessary on that. That was just information. So thank you, and thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is public hearing. And this is David F. Carney at Five Clifton Road. This is a request for license to maintain town property. You will also notice that I did provide supplemental information on the counters that was provided to it later this afternoon.
So Diane Williamson is not here, but she's on the call. Is that correct? If you could.
That is correct. Let me get her on.
Yes, please. I just had a quick question for her. Excellent. Diane will be with us in just one moment. We apologize for the clunkiness that we go through on this, but it allows us to continue with important meetings. Hi, Diane.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you. So Diane, I know this was continued from our last meeting. The reason why I wanted you to speak on this is that on the council's request, you had gone, and also through the administrator, you had gone to the petitioner's home to take a look and find out if there was an opportunity for less use, no use. Could you talk to that? I, and tell us, is there any change in your recommendation to us, please?
Sure. Yeah. So I met Mr. Carney out at his property, I believe it was last week or the week prior. He had staked out a proposed location that he would like you to consider, which requires less square footage. I believe it was eighty square feet of land that he would need to get permission for maintaining. We walked the site. We looked at other locations. I believe there might be other locations suitable, but for various reasons, they weren't acceptable to Mr. Carney and his family. So we went through the different options, and he has some maps to show you where those locations are and what he proposes back to you as his alternative location. My recommendation has not changed as a result of that site visit. I do think that the land should be, that the shed should be removed from the land, put on the Carney's property with some sort of a demarcation along the property line. I think it's, as I said in my earlier memo, I think it's precedent setting, and I think that it's just the right thing to do, to be fair, to to the public and to all the other properties that are but public open space or public, public property. So I know, as I said, Mr. Carney emailed over some photos of areas of the property. I think two of the sites were locations that I had suggested, and then one, the one site that he is suggesting. So
Thank you, Diane. Is there any questions for Diane? And what's this council's pleasure?
Oh.
Petitioner on here?
I don't know. Chris is going to help me with that. I can't, I am logged into Zoom on my computer, and I cannot see attendance or anything else. So it's okay that I can. Excellent. So could you give her access, please? Diane, could you stay available and accessible? Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, I'm not sure. There we go.
Okay, there you are. So if you could, if you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
David F. Carney in Five Clifton Road.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for continuing this discussion. So concerning this ordinance itself, you know, I, we all agree that the purpose of the ordinance is to protect and preserve townland boundaries. But we do need to re-recognize the occasional need for for minor exceptions. The council's questions from the last meeting were really helpful in trying to find an appropriate solution that provides the least impact possible and making sure that all other options are exhausted. And for this reason, I just asked that that the situation be thoughtfully considered under its own merits. The approval of one request would not be the precedent we would cite for subsequent approvals. And and the denial of a meritless request wouldn't be considered a reason to deny the next request. Our request for the temporary license uses eighty-eight square feet of an abutting undeveloped parcel. And that would not, that would, and we wouldn't be here if if that was due to we were moving off because they were developing that land. It wouldn't make sense. Currently, the caretakers of the land have confirmed that they have no immediate plans for it other than a wooded meadow. And our proposal really does not conflict or interfere with that use. You know, just to mention some other projects, Leahy's Pond, for one. That's an example of a buttering approaching on land that's going to not remain undeveloped. And any request from those butters would be, you know, taken with different considerations because they they sit on land that the the town is planning on developing now. This is obviously different from our situation. Just as the circumstances that that the town considered when they allowed a restaurant owner to access publicly owned alleyway to, so that he was going to be able to provide convenient accommodations to patrons with mobility needs. You know, I just, I'm hoping that we can be considered on on our merits. I just want to be clear with the use for the shed before we get into what the proposal is. For twenty years, I've been involved in providing theatrical set design and construction for local schools on a volunteer basis in our own schools. I started at the elementary level, built for the middle school, built for the high school. I continued that work well after my kids had left the school system. As of now, I do work for Pawtucket and for nonprofit after-school program of which on a volunteer basis. The other, the other thing, I put a lot of time into musical events. I own a lot of musical equipment. Most recently, the Bristol Porch Festival, I'm on the committee for that. I provided the equipment for at least two of the porches, probably had stuff on on more of them. You know, I've worked for ten years with with the Stone Church Coffee House here in Bristol. Mr. Claro played that with Robbie O'Connell years ago. You know, and facilitating, facilitating public performing arts events is important, and I welcome any offers anytime that somebody needs, needs something, you know, in the town. In the last ten years, though, I've dealt with three degenerated discs and two hip replacements. The reason I've been able to keep up with this type of work is I've been able to back my van down the side yard on that piece of land right up to the shed, and I can just move stuff straight out of the back of the van, put it down, push it into place, and I'm not doing heavy lifting on my end. When I'm at the other end, I always have, you know, people who do all the heavy lifting for me. And I'm not sure I would have maintained and kept doing the the work I had, I do. You know, if it became that that troublesome on my end. There's times that it's worse. There's times that it's better. Right now, I'm going through physical therapy. But that that just sort of details, details part of the reason that I'm recommending the location I am. As recommended, Ms. Williamson came out and looked at several areas with us. My house is set almost to the back of the lot. In fact, we should all have a copy of this.
We do. Yes, thank you.
You can see how how close we are on the back. We have a patio on one side. And we have a deck on the other side, and we have a side yard on this side. In the past, what I've been able to do is drive back down here to where my shed is over here. Excuse me, everything's backwards on my end. Back in, unload, reload. It's, it's been very easy trying to get down, you know, and lug stuff down through and then into my basement. You know, that that would really be tough for me right now. And I'm pretty sure this isn't going to get better. It's, it's probably going to get worse with time. So she had looked at a couple of different areas. And and they were all really good suggestions, and they were all really to be considered. One was, if you're looking at the front of the house, on this side over here is essentially my parents' side of the property. This is a, this is a house with an in-law. On that side, I have an ornamental tree that's about fifteen years old over here. I'm not, well, you can probably see it better on yours. And we have this fence here. This fence would, to be able to move a shed into that area, I'd have to remove the tree, take the fence out and put it back down there. The the biggest issue and the thing that I'm really hoping for consideration in this is that puts it at, you know, even back in there, it puts it in a place that's going to be very difficult for me to move things in and out of. And I'm trying to plan for for getting older. I'm only fifty-three, so I'm still young. But that was my thoughts on that side. On the opposite side, there were a bunch of great areas to look at. If you look at this side, this this parking area is where I park. And she had suggested this area right up here, which is behind a trash storage area. And there is an area here. You can see we have a wedge shaped lot. Now, once we, once we scale back to where we're supposed to be, it's, it's, it cuts off very dramatically. And so I staked out that area which it it fits well until you look at the space between the house and the, the the corner of the shed. I can't move the corner of the shed. I can't move forward anymore because we have trees and we have this stand over here. So to go in that area, I'm ending up with, with less than three feet between the corner of the shed and the corner of the house. Once we, you know, part of this plan needs to be putting some sort of some sort of divider along their fence or whatever. It, it would cut off safety access to the backyard. You have another photo that shows this and shows really how small an area this turns into down here. So I, that was one of the three areas we looked at. Now, at the top of my driveway, when we got the new trash barrels, I had built what my wife calls barrage mahal or trash mahal here. And it stores, we have, we have an in-law, so we have four trash barrels, which, you know, the, the, the town has huge trash barrels now, which is great, but that's stored in there and then another four foot section with doors for, for storage. So we need to be behind that. This shot is the back of that. So I looked at putting it over here. I, I need to leave about two feet of space behind that to, to have just access to paint and, and maintain behind it. Unfortunately, the two things it does is it, it ends up with the front door being almost eighteen inches off the ground. As my yard slopes off down, it's going to require about a twelve, fifteen foot ramp to even be able to get into it and make it useful. And, you know, with, with conditions like ice and other things that we deal with in New England. You know, I, I want to be able to get in and get out at almost ground level. A small amount wouldn't be a big deal. You should have this as well, which is a side view. Looking at towards the, towards the house. In this, you can see these, these are the remnants of two large trees. There was originally four large trees in a stand right here. The stumps are still in the ground. There's still one tree standing. To pull any of these out properly, it's going to disrupt the roots on the other tree. American Tree Service was not convinced that they could do that without killing the other tree. I'm trying to avoid, avoid doing that, but if you look at your pictures, you can see it. Puts the corner right on that stump. I don't have any room to push it back further. And that's seen. In this final shot, you can see what the, what the height would be to keep it level. And again, I run into this very small, narrow passageway over here, which worries me. If we had fire or rescue needing to get into the backyard, especially with a, with a fence running down the other side. So what that brought me to was this final picture, which, bear with me. I don't know how weathermen do this. That brings me to this, this last picture, which would put the, the shed at the end of the driveway. I have access to back up, load and unload. It, it uses about eighty-eight square feet on this side that overhangs. The red line here is the property line. One of the things you can see here is that my driveway right now overhangs that property line. I would, as part of this, correct that and bring it back over so that we can properly put something along that line and, you know, assure you that there's not going to be creep outside of this. The, the porch, I think what happened was my landscaper looked at one side of the stone wall being this thick rather than this side because both of them overhang by approximately the same amount. They were both done within a year of each other. And until we, until we had the recent survey, I never even looked and sighted down that line to see where it ended up. So, you know, what my request is, is temporary use for that eighty-eight square feet. On my end, we'll vacate everything off. We'll make sure that the patio corner is taken care of and we don't overhang. We'll make sure that the driveway is taken care of. If we transfer the property or if the town decides that they're going to develop that property, we'll, we'll move off immediately or as soon as, you know, logistically possible. And we'll make sure that, that we, you know, maintain our boundaries and, and stay within everything else. Does anybody have any questions?
Sorry. Could you just remind me what the original square footage you're looking for?
Yeah, it was thirty-seven hundred square feet, thirty-four hundred square feet. So we're about, we reduced by about ninety-eight percent.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to double check that.
Ms. Carney, thank you for the detailed pictures and everything. On this, I, when we're making decisions, I think we have to think about what's fair for the, the full town. And it's not about being unfair for you. But, you know, when I was looking at this and coming up with my decision based on those recommendations from the departments, I believe the, the land should remain with the cemetery at this time. So I guess, Mr. Chairman, I may give a cross to deny the license to maintain the property.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
I just want to, you know, thank Diane. I know that the last time this issue kind of popped up that, you know, we wanted, or we asked town administrator if they would be able to work with, you know, the individual, you know, to see if they were able to narrow, narrowly tailor, you know, a part of that property to accommodate the property owner or the, the other property owner. And Diane, I just got to, want to thank you for, you know, going out there and, and doing everything that you could to, you know, make this situation and to work with the homeowner to identify the other places on this property that this might be able to work out.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion?
Well, I just, I, I don't, I, I actually think they did a good job coming up with a much smaller footprint. And a much smaller request, which is what we were kind of aiming for, at least I was when we, when I, I think I brought, I brought that up last time. I mean, I think it's perfectly appropriate to be able to, you know, help the homeowner out until which time that this land is actually needed. And especially if he's going to correct this, which, I mean, is that going to be part of another motion to correct that anyway? So I, I think eighty-eight square feet is a reasonable amount. I think the fact that you want to be able to, and that's what I was kind of getting at, looking at when you were explaining all the other sites. How would you back up into those locations and figure out how to be able to get things in and out of the shed? So I don't agree with the motion. So that's, that's where I am on this.
Any other dialogue?
Well, I, I, I fully support, you know, the fact that we got to be very cautious as to how we proceed. And, you know, in set precedents or while, or addressing each and its own merits, however, we need to be cautious. I'm looking at, at this design here. I think that's the one you're looking at, Mary. Okay. And this is the one, can you clarify that one again, please?
Tony is currently looking at the last one with the red line about halfway through the proposal using eighty-eight square feet.
Yeah. So, so that puts the shed, I've left two feet on the side of the shed between, between that structure that you can see that exists right now. That's the property line, that red line right there that's going across it. So you can see where my landscaper had put in the, the overhang on my driveway there. I have a similar size overhang unfortunately on my patio in the back. So either way, obviously those are going to be corrected so that we can make sure that we can, we can put something into, to delineate the difference between our, our lot and the, in the cemetery land.
So the fact of the matter is, if I can say, this is going to be, so it's eighty-eight square feet, but we're actually getting that, it's going to be corrected so that this other area is not, is, is actually almost taken out of that. You know what I mean? So I mean, it's actually, from what you have right now, if you never came to us, it's not really an additional eighty-eight because you're going to be taking out the square footage that doesn't belong to you anyway. If that makes sense to anybody, but it made sense to me.
Okay. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't. Yeah, it's okay. Any other dialogue? I'd like to, just two seconds is that this council feels for this petitioner because we understand that whether it was the previous owner or previous owners at one point or another, there, it's my understanding there was a stone wall there that was taken down. Your expectation probably would have been mine or is, or would have been mine if I was the property owner, thinking that this was mine. And we certainly understand where, where the request comes from. And, you know, we certainly feel for you in that regard. I can, you know, we're looking at, and I know the public can't see this very well. We're looking at a picture with a line that goes kind of a little bit through a, that belongs to the town. Yeah, there you go. And that tree is town and a portion of the driveway is on town property and a portion of the patio is on town property. I think was captured well, so I won't reiterate what's already been said, but I know that all of us certainly feel for your current situation. So is there any other dialogue?
So am I to understand that we deny in altogether, that we're not entertaining the minimal piece of land that is capturing?
The current motion on the floor that was seconded was to deny the petition in, in all forms. In all forms. That's the way I took it. Is that correct?
I think it came from a long, a long way. I mean, from thirty-four, whatever, hundred square feet to purchase to eighty-eight square feet to maintain. I think that's, you know, reasonable accommodation to go back to the drawing board and come back with this plan myself.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. If, unless there's other dialogue, I'll entertain.
I, I'm just reading the, the, the motion that we made at the last meeting. And I agree that if we had not been any change, that I would go knockout. But the, I'm looking at the, at the motion that we made and it said, you know, board announcement to refer the matter to the town building officials to work with the petitioner to determine the least amount of land necessary to maintain the shed on town property and to continue the matter. Okay, and so forth. But, so I, I'm just thinking if there was due diligence here that tried to minimize the amount of space that was taken up by the, by the shed on town land, you know, and I mean, I appreciate the fact Diane went out and worked with the petitioner, you know, and tried to come up with some solutions here. So was this anything at all that you were considering, Diane, or not, the, this, the, the one in question right now?
Well, I, as Mr. Carney illustrated to you, I had found some other sites on the property where I thought the shed could be relocated to where it wouldn't, he wouldn't need a license to maintain it. It wouldn't be on town property at all. So I, I was going towards those types of locations on the property. And Mr. Carney had selected the site that he's presenting to have the eighty-eight square foot license to maintain area as his proposal. I wasn't favoring that one because I, I found other locations, but they didn't work for him. So, you know, it was sort of a, to me, it was the private convenience versus the public land that the shed was occupying. And I, I was leaning towards the public land, not having the private shed on it at all.
So if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's all.
No. So if I'm understanding correctly, then you, you actually, there were other locations that would have moved the shed into solo property. I mean, to the property of the owner. Am I correct without interfere or did it come up any talent?
Right. Those are my, you know, we walked around the entire property and I think, you know, as Mr. Carney explained, the, there were constraints that he had for the other locations that I had selected. You know, different concerns that he had for access or proximity to the house. And those were his sort of private concerns. I didn't, I didn't see a problem with those other locations, but, you know, I know he did.
We, we, I just want to point out that we didn't actually measure at that time. We talked about areas. So the documents you have in front of you show, show what happened once I actually took and laid that footprint out in that, those particular areas and where we, we actually came out to physically. You know, which was very different than, than walking around. I don't know if maybe we should have pulled out a, a tape measure at the time. It's, it's certainly, it's an odd, you know, it's an odd shape on that corner of the property. You know, it's not, it's not a, you know, it's not an easy thing. I, I think the areas would have been the, the first considerations, the areas that she picked out. That the situation with, you can see in the pictures that the property does drop off about six feet from the top to the bottom. You know, so, so there's also, you know, geographical and elevations that, that are also constraints. I, I just had one question was, I, I saw that that the, the historical commission was supposed to have somebody. Did they not join the meeting or?
Is, did you mean the, sorry, did you mean the cemetery commission?
Yes.
And they, they weren't requested to be at this evening's meeting?
Okay. I thought they were on the agenda. I could be wrong.
They're on the agenda. You are correct that they actually are listed as a recommendation from the Commission of Cemeteries. They're on, there is part of your agenda. They're listed as E on there, but not in attendance. They were not requested to be here. Certainly they can attend, of course, but they were not requested to.
Okay. Did, did we have a reading of their recommendation or did they provide another recommendation?
They did not change their recommendation. Their recommendation stands as the last one, which is they had no opposition to it.
All right. That, I just wanted to make sure that that was still the case.
Certainly, certainly. Is there any other dialogue? Okay. So hearing none, we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. So we had four to deny and I'm sorry, four in approval of the denial, I'm sorry. And one opposed to that. That was fair. I'm going to, just before we go, this council appreciates the way that you conveyed the information. It was very clear. It is not normally this easy to understand what's going on. And I know that feels like the negative, but it would have made it that much more difficult to have this dialogue and we appreciate it.
I, I just want to make sure that, that I was, I was heard on the merits of this. And I really appreciate Ms. Williamson. She's always been a huge help. We've, we did an addition. We have a in-law apartment on our house and I, I've always been, had such a good experience. And this is, this is another good experience despite not getting my way.
Thank you, Mr. Carney.
I'm sorry, it's public hearing, so I think we might have to close the public hearing.
My, my goodness, we went through all of that and, and this was a public hearing. My apologies to, I'll remind myself and my colleagues, and I started with myself, is that we typically open this up to the public first. So this is an interesting experience, but I'm going to open it up. No, it's okay. We are here now. It's okay to do it this way. It's just not our typical fashion. And I'm going to ask, and this will be clunky because we're on Zoom. Chris, I'm going to look for you to, obviously, we've heard in favor from the petitioner and we've had a lot of dialogue there. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? My goodness, this feels backwards. I apologize. And if there's hands up, I'll, I'll look for them. Okay. I'm going to give it and I'm going to ask three times as we normally do. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
I have Michelle Hughes with her hand raised.
Okay. So this council recognizes Michelle Hughes. If you could allow her to speak. And if you could, once you are on, we'll recognize you. And if you could state your full name and address for the record. We're waiting.
Michelle Hughes, and that, and I'm not sure if I can speak because I'm not currently a Bristol resident. So I'm assuming I may not be able to speak.
So we'll, we'll allow you to speak. It's okay, but if you could state your full name and address for the record?
Michelle Hughes, twenty-three Cahoon's Lane, Westport, Mass.
So welcome, Michelle. Go ahead.
Thank you. I thought, um, Mr. Carney presented, you know, a great, he, you know, he has, seems like he could have, um, it could help him with the convenience of what he's doing on a volunteer basis. So I, I kind of felt for him on that and was hopeful he might get this variance, but that's all.
Thank you. So is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? And I'm going to give it an extra moment. No.
Motion, motion to close the public hearing.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm going to ask if I may, actually, we've taken a vote on it. Mike, do I need to take any other actions? Should we for argument, just to ask for the motion again? So the solicitor has confirmed that I'm going to ask for that motion again, uh, if I may, please. Tim?
No, okay, um, uh, based, based on the recommendations, um, making a motion that the land should remain available for cemetery purposes. Uh, again, this is not to be unfair to the Carneys, but fair to the Bristol taxpayers as a whole, looking at precedent setting. My motion would be to deny the request for a license to maintain town prop. So I maintain the town property.
With a motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron, I will ask for discussion again. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that is the same and.
Same both.
And how wonderful for us to make the Carneys go through that again. You're so welcome. Sir, I'm so, so, so. I really am. This is not the way we normally go, so.
May I, um, may I just ask a question?
Certainly.
Just in terms of follow-up, um, what, what would be the, um, expected timeframe for, um, the, the removal, the remedy of this?
I'm going to answer that question with a question. In the past, what have we done? Do we know?
I, I don't recall a similar situation to this.
The solicitor is going to weigh in right now, Diane.
My suggestion, in a case like this, I think, um, given how long it's been there, et cetera, my suggestion would be refer it to the administration and let them work that out.
Okay.
Let them work out a timeframe, a reasonable timeframe for removal.
So I'm not going to ask for a motion. Is there any opposition to that, those steps?
No.
Okay. Uh, Tony is smiling because he feels like we just, um, gave difficult work to the administrator. I, I, yeah, okay. I, I think this got, I think we can all, uh, accept a reasonable timeline, whatever we all believe is reasonable. I think of, I, I think we all trusted that the administrator and the, uh, petitioner would work on behalf of, of all to do it in a timely fashion, but also a reasonable fashion. You've mentioned some issues going on right now and we would certainly be understanding and respectful of that.
So considering it's winter time and all of that, you know, I would say by, I mean, if it's summer, it should be.
Okay.
It's also hard to find contractors.
Okay.
Maybe the flaw.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Diane. Thanks for the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F1. And this is a petition from Christopher Santiago of two fifteen Wood Street, and this is a request for an accessible parking space.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve the requests for, uh, accessible parking space. Two fifteen Wood Street.
And may I ask that you add to that? We can refer to the solicitor to create, uh, in ordnance and.
And refer to the solicitor to create an ordinance. Thank you.
I'll second that with a question.
Discussion, discussion? Discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Um, what I questioned though, and, uh, I know we have, uh, Lieutenant, right? Yes. Lieutenant, yeah, and maybe you can answer the question of one of you. Uh, when we, we get the placards, I was looking at those placards. It doesn't state to which vehicle that belongs to. There's no name, no, no plate number. How do we know for sure that the individual is entitled to a card?
So under the law, the, the way these things work is that once you create such a space, it would be available for anyone who had that card as a practical matter, probably going to be used by the person in the neighborhood. But y- you don't restrict it just to that person and that, that's true of any such handicapped space anywhere um, in your own parking lots here, et cetera. So it's sort of the same rule. Um, and Melissa, when we get to this again, uh, this actually doesn't become an ordinance. You have first and second readings, but it's not pursuant to an ordinance the way you set up this policy. So the, the motion would be a constitute first reading. It doesn't have to be an ordinance, though.
Thank you. But that wasn't your question, though, was it?
No, it was not. Okay, I, that was not the response. I hear what you're saying, right? And I'm very clear about the fact that once we create a spot, that it is anyone with a placard can, uh, there.
Right.
However, how do we determine that that particular individual who's making, making the request is in fact entitled to that? Is there a medical note? Is there?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I missed.
That, that, that individual, I mean, I know you have to apply and get a medical note, but do we request that at all, you know, from that individual as part of the record?
I, I can answer that, Tony.
Okay.
Uh, so part of the review of the petition, Lieutenant Wasney did determine that he does have a valid placard. He is legally blind. His wife is a caretaker. She also has a placard and there is a number that's associated with that and it's registered to him.
Okay, and by the way, no means I'm referring to this particular case. I'm talking about in general, you know, how we go about one. So I appreciate it. Thank you for the explanation.
So we had a motion and a second to approve. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F2, and this is Robert Kraft from Seventeenth Sandy Lane. This is a recourse, a request for a curb cut on twenty-two Wall Street. I did receive a letter from the petitioner to redraw his, um, petition at this time to allow some time to work with the appropriate officials to submit a drainage plan as recommended by the DPW director.
So, uh, Mr. Solicitor, just to receive and file at this point?
Yeah, um, what I would do is, uh, motion to approve the withdrawal.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the withdrawal. Any other dialogue? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we go down to the next agenda, is it possible to make it cooler in here? My goodness.
You called it.
For those of you at home, be thankful you're at home. It's really warm in here right now.
Sauna. Sauna temperatures.
Wow. We're just going to take an extra moment here. The administrator was kind enough to go in to make the adjustments.
My mic has been off, huh? Good thing we have good lighting here because.
It doesn't take long to get out of practice for these, uh, Zoom meetings. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. All set. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G1, and these are public service appointments for the month of January. The first one we have is the tree warden. We have Stephen Saracino with interest in reappointment.
Based on the recommendation of the administrator, I move that we reappoint, uh, Mrs. Saracino.
Second.
There's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to reappoint. Is there any discussion? I do, I, Steve continues to do a great job. And for all of you, I looked into why we reappoint every year. And it's actually part of the charter and it may be something we want to consider at our next charter review. It would seem very appropriate that um, this appointment should be a two-year term at least, uh, kind of to follow along with the council term. Um, but that's why we do it every year. And I thought I was going to propose making a change this evening, but turns out it's a charter change. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G2, and this is the Bristol Christmas Festival with additional new members with terms to expire on October twenty-two. We have two interests for appointment. We have Maria Ursini and we also have Donna Wilson. And we have a recommendation from the Christmas festival chairman, uh, Michael Byly.
Based on the, uh, chairman's recommendation, uh, make a motion to accept Maria Ursini and Donna Wilson to the, uh, Bristol Christmas Festival.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to accept. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, next item on the agenda is G3, and this is the Weposit Trust. This is one on, a one-year term. We have Brian Lefingwell with interest in reappointment, and we also have Alan Bullock with interest in appointment.
They've been looking to reappoint, uh, Brian Lefingwell, please.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint Brian Lefingwell. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is G4. We have the Assistant Harbor Masters, and we have a recommendation from the Harbor Master.
Based on the recommendations of the.
Again, hey, based on the recommendation of, uh, the Harbor Master, um, I moved that we, uh, appoint the, um, is auxiliary board, no.
The slate of nominees?
Yes.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to, uh, appoint the slate. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is G5, and this is the auxiliary Harbor Masters with the terms to expire January twenty-three, and we also have another recommendation from the Harbor Master.
Make a motion to, based on the, uh, Harbor Masters recommendation, make a motion, a motion to approve the slate for auxiliary Harbor Masters as stated.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to, uh, appoint the slate as stated. Is there any other discussion?
Uh, just briefly, um, the, uh, the other group, the assistants, et cetera, uh, as well as the auxiliary. Uh, there is a statement made by the, uh, Harbor Master. There are certain requirements and I would say that this should be included um, prior to the reappointments.
So you're saying that to follow along with the recommendation of the Harbor Master, that those minimum requirements be met before being appointed to those positions?
Being, exactly.
Okay. Who, uh, let's see, that was, uh, Tim, you made that initial motion? Could you include that if you agree?
Uh, to include that the, uh, based on the satisfactory medical screenings, is that the recommendation by the Harbor Master?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Perfect. And that was seconded by Mary, correct? Okay. Is there any other dialogue or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G6, and this is the CRMC representative with terms to expire January twenty-twenty-three. And we have John Tryana with interest in reappointment. We have in Stephen Bridgity with interest in appointment, Robert DiAngelo with interest in appointment, and Vincent Compagnon also with interest in appointment.
I have to say it. I don't think we've ever had this much interest. Thank you all for, uh, expressing interest. What's this council's pleasure?
Make a motion to reappoint John, and as you pointed out, a big thank you goes to all the individuals who have shown interest.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint John Troyano. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, next item on the agenda is G7, and this is the Special Constable Private Investigators Matrons Retired Officers, retiree officers. And we have the recommendation for appointment by the Chief of Police.
Based on the recommendation of the police chief, I move that we reappoint. I'll make the appointments, I should say.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, um, to follow the recommendation here, uh, and appoint. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Before we move any further, I will say what I always do.
We have one more.
We have one more is what I'm going to say.
Nice try.
So excited to thank everybody. We have G8, and this is the, uh, Special Constable Fire Police, and we have the recommendation for appointment by the Fire Chief.
Based on the recommendation of the Fire Chief, I move that we appoint the police fire.
Second.
Fire police, I should say.
Fire, yeah.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to appoint all that were there. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this is, this is the part. So this council, as we always do, say thank you. And we also say thank you to those who expressed interest in these positions. And a side note, however we advertise the CMRC representative, if we could use those same words for our other boards and commissions, my goodness. I joke, but thank you to all that put your name in. If you, if there's something else that you're interested in, please don't hesitate to express interest in those, and this council would certainly be happy to talk with you um, about those positions that are open, uh, and those are available whether or not it's on our website. And obviously we put ads in the paper in that regard. If you're not sure what's open, take a moment and go on our website or reach out to Town Hall. We're happy to tell you what's available. Um, and once again, we appreciate all the boards and commissions, their hard work and efforts and the time they take away from their families to get back to the town. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H1, and this is, um, Economic Development Coordinator Vitale, but this is a request for an extension of the meeting date for the update of the, um, ARP broadband fiber project to the February ninth, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
So I understand that we want to continue this because we have some additional information that we want to discuss that, correct?
That's correct. So we've been working over the past several months to get some budgetary figures, uh, to present to the council. I'm getting up to speed on fiber and, and all the nuances that go into it. So I want to make sure that when we bring this to you, we have all the information and the best recommendation going forward.
So maybe we can, um, continue this and we can ask you to bring it back to this council when it's ready. That way we don't continue it, and if it's not ready for frontline yet, we do, pardon me, we do appreciate the efforts that, uh, you're putting into it. This is an opportunity, I think, um, that is for today and also for the future. So it's worth the time. Uh, but, uh, if we could just get a motion to continue and they'll come back in front of us when appropriate.
So I'll move.
Second.
So a motion to second to continue. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H2, and this is Benjamin Church Home for Ageed Men. Um, this is a request to extend the real estate tax exemption. This is continued from December twenty-second, and we have a draft resolution and draft legislation.
Uh, Mr. Solicitor, could you just take a moment and refresh the, the public in this council on what our steps are here and what we're considering?
You've been asked by the Benjamin Church Home for Ageed Men to continue the tax break that it used to, um, take advantage of, um, prior to the sale. And in order to do that, you, um, need to enter into what's known as a pilot agreement, which stands for payment in lieu of taxes. And, um, in order to have the ability to do that, it is necessary for enabling legislation to be adopted to give the council the ability to, um, negotiate and enter into pilot agreements with those nonprofit charitable entities that may come before you. I've prepared, um, the legislation ba- based on legislation which exists already for a number of towns to enter pilot agreements along with a resolution that I'd asked that you adopt. Um, and then the resolution and the legislation would be, um, sent on to your general assembly delegation, asking them to bring it through the process in the general assembly.
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion to adopt the draft resolution and draft legislation?
Second.
There's a motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to adopt the draft resolution and, uh, legislation. Is there discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, this, this is a definitely a great opportunity. Here it is. We are supporting Benjamin Church Manor, or in particular, the senior center, you know, to continue the service. And, uh, by us doing this, it's a show of goodwill that the town is willing to, to continue to support the service that are currently there. Uh, however, I will also would reach out that there would be some collaboration from there and from the end of the senior center to work with the town to, uh, because obviously this is not a forever thing, and, uh, certainly it would be important to have some collaboration.
Is there any other discussion? I'd also like to add that it, it was on the record from last time, but, um, one of the things very important to keep in mind is that nothing is changing in the use of. I'd also like to add that it was on the record from last time, but one of the things very important to keep in mind is that nothing is changing in the use of this property. And I think that's critical and I want to make sure that we continue to say that. Because it's, it was not on, it wasn't taxable prior. So there is no revenue changes to the town. And as importantly, again, the use is not changing there. So what's already been expressed along with, I support it for those reasons that were expressed plus the ones that I've already expressed. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H three and this is Economic Development Coordinator Chris Vitale. And we got to the Wally School Community Resource Senior Center presentation. This is continued from December first. There is a revised presentation in the packet. There's both the prior one and the new one and there's also a petition from the Director of the Benjamin Church attached.
So Chris, before I give it to you, just a refresher on all of this and I know that you put a lot of work into where we are at the moment with the presentation along with the, obviously the architects. This is back in front of us because this council supported taking the next step, but we needed a lot more information. I know we have a lot more information this evening in regards to some particular questions that were asked. A little bit more specifics in regards to the building makeup, its usage. I know we've covered a lot of this. It's not, it is worth kind of reiterating some of those points. Which I think the only, so far, the only unfortunate thing here is maybe its name. And actually, most recently, my colleague Aaron and I had a quick discussion and he brought that up and I've heard that also a few times. Calling it a senior center, I think we're going to hear some dialogue this evening about duplication or lack thereof of efforts. So unfortunately, or fortunately, that was what we called it at the moment. And as I said to somebody else, arose by any other name. In this instance, not so much. I think the, the name actually is conveying potentially ideas and things that we want to do there, maybe a little bit incorrectly. So, but I'm gonna, Chris, if you could share with us the current plan, what you have there, and then I'm gonna open it up to my colleagues for discussion.
Certainly, if you just give me one minute, I'll get it up on the screen so we can.
Sure, take your time. This is what the TVs were for. Thank you very much.
All right. It's up there. All right, good. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you again. I know coming out of the last meeting in December, there were some points of clarification. There were questions asked and we want to answer those today for you and the members of the public. Once we get to the next slide. So just to provide a recap for those who weren't in attendance at our December meeting, the town has a need for dedicated space for its municipal senior service activities. You know, this project would help us address that need by converting the decommissioned Wally School into a community resource and senior center. During the last meeting in December, we had talked about what that total project cost would look like. And we estimate, you know, based on what our engineers have told us, that to be three point eight million. That also includes stabilization work, which as we know, needs to get done at the facility. So when we look at the Wally School site and it's around the area, taking, looking at the parking configuration, we have about forty parking spaces in the State Street lot. Just a couple hundred feet away from the, what would be the main entrance to the building. In addition, there is a rear parking lot right behind the building that concurrently accommodate six cars. Based on how the site is currently designed, it does allow for one-way traffic. And we believe that this current configuration, the amount of spaces that are there around the facility can accommodate the proposed use and what we see for programming in the facility. But we did engage Bruce Thornton here on our next slide to see, you know, if we were to make some modifications and slight improvements, you know, what we, could we do? So one of the proposals and concepts that they brought to us was we could relocate that entry into the back parking lot of the Wally School a little further to the east. And what that would allow us to do is one, reorient that parking lot to give us a few additional spaces, have a little bit more of a dedicated drop-off zone and it would still allow for that one-way traffic. So it would come in off of State Street and it would exit on Wood Street. Now, this is something that, you know, if the town was interested in exploring this concept further, you know, we could engage Bruce Thornton and a civil engineer during that schematic design phase of the project. So going into the first floor, so we engaged Bruce Thornton, who's been with us and has done, spent a considerable amount of time looking at the building and what configurations we could do. This plan takes into consideration conversations with our departments as to what their needs are. So here on the first floor, you know, we'd have our main entry in that top left corner. There would be a vestibule area where in addition to providing shelter as you come in, would also serve is the new elevator that would go into the building so that you could access the different floors. In this concept, you walk into a lobby area with a reception, a lounge to the left and public offices to the right. And so I'll get into personnel a little bit later in the presentation, but here on the first floor, we have three offices for our existing town staff. There is also space for dining for different programming that we're proposing or that we currently do. And shifting to the second floor, we have dedicated space for activities. We have a library space, meeting room, and one of the important things to emphasize with each of these spaces is depending on what that need is, it's, it's considered flex space. So really, these uses that we have here, you know, I know in this plan, for example, in that top right corner, we have tables, you know, for example, that could be broken down. It could be a space for a Zumba class or a recreation activity for the seniors. So back in December, I gave you a high-low review of the programming that's being done by our Parks and Rec Department. I want to provide a year-end review of that and what their final end of the year count was. So in twenty twenty one, the senior attendance at our Recreation Center was just over eleven thousand class registrations. When you break that down, that's about two hundred and fifty-one seniors per week that attend these different programs. And when we look at the number of programs done through our Recreation Department that target seniors or more geared towards seniors, it's twenty classes. So when we look at the operation for this, this building, what we're proposing is hours of operation Monday to Friday, nine to five. This would complement the hours of operation that are up at our Recreation Center right now. We do expect there to be some special events that might fall outside these hours, but in terms of our activities, regularly scheduled activities, it would take place during that timeframe. And I also want to note that we did reach out to the Bristol Warren School, who manages the bus service for Mount Carmel to figure out their pickup drop-off times and any proposals that we do would take into consideration, you know, the cars and the traffic and when the buses are going to be in that area. So as you can see here, the drop-off time they have listed, day forty-five, pickup time, three twenty-five. So in the morning, really, we wouldn't have any overlap and that afternoon, we would make sure that any program was either currently going or wouldn't start until after that pickup period is concluded. So classes, so these classes are currently being done through our Parks and Recreation Department. The list here is the different type of fitness programs, the number of classes they hold per week and class sizes. So as you can see through this table, class size is typically between twelve and twenty-five, which again, we think is very reasonable. So in addition to the recreation aspect, there is also other services that have either been provided or are plans to be provided through our Recreation Department. So the town of Bristol regularly receives program proposal forms either from fitness instructors or residents who just have an interest in, in providing an activity for their fellow residents within the town. So there's been different workshops. I know there was a wreath making workshop that was scheduled here this past December, fire safety. And so we would expect that same format to operate here at the Wally School as well, based on what that community interest is for programming. Municipal programs, as you know, we do local activities and trips through our Recreation Department. And I know that there is a new initiative with our Coordinator Senior Services do coffee hours. To, again, just build better relationships with the seniors within the community. Special events, you know, this again can't be a location that we can't hold those special events like the Christmas dinner that we had back in December and this would be an appropriate venue for that. And then high-level municipal services, being where it is within the town, this is an excellent location for heating and cooling center. We have vaccination clinics, you know, recently with the boosters that the Fire Chief has put on as well as consultation services through our other departments like human resources or human services. And I won't spend too much on here, but when we talked in our December meeting about, you know, really why we saw this building as a good fit, this just adds to our discussion regarding the comprehensive plan. And really, we see this as a facility where it can allow our existing programming, a space to grow as we expect, again, to our population to grow over the next ten years. You know, its location opens up a lot of opportunities to partner on intergenerational programming. You know, obviously a very controlled format, but in a way that would benefit our seniors. Again, proximity to community partners, the funding that we have available in support of this project. And again, I think our long-term goal, getting this building back and rehabilitated. So operating cost. The operating cost, we expect new spending to primarily be the utilities on the building, so electrical, heat, water. So based on conversations with our Finance Director, we estimate that to be about fourteen thousand five hundred a year. And then the debt service for the bond for the portion of this project, which is estimated to be a hundred and thirteen thousand. Now for existing spending, it primarily will be the personnel and within our current budget, we already have our Coordinator Senior Services allocate under Recreation Department, our Director of Social Services and Public Welfare, the Police Community on and Custodian, which we can shift hours to also support the upkeep of this new facility. And finally, I just again wanted to include this information from the last meeting, it's the same slide, but I thought it was very important for the conversation purposes. The funding sources for this project. So as you can see, between the rescue funds, the CBG funds, considerable amount of this project, we're hoping to get grant funded. The rest, we expect to go out to bond through the voter authorized public bond from a few years ago for the total project cost of three point million. But at this point, I want to turn it back over to the council and answer any questions you have.
So first, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues on thoughts, questions for, for Chris or just in general to each other.
I'll start off, Chris, thank you for all the hard work you've, you've put in this and, and everybody that's involved in putting in that. In fact, I forgot somebody, I apologize. I think my first question is, I understand the plan and I understand what we want to do to stabilize that building. I wanted to know as far as the stakeholders involved, like the seniors, the residents and things like that, have we had a chance to fold them in to kind of get their input yet? And is, is the, if you haven't, is that the next step to kind of get their input on it? Because we want to understand like, hey, is, what do they have to say? What do they want from it?
So in conversations with our Recreation Department and our Coordinator Senior Services, I believe that those conversations are ongoing and have been ongoing with the residents in the community. You know, over the past year and a half, I know Baron's focus has been a lot of COVID response related. But that gave her an excellent opportunity to make connections, get to know the residents within the community and hear, you know, really where they need her. So I think those, as we look towards this project, I think that those discussions will continue to be go ongoing.
Right. Because I understand we, we need to stabilize that building. So regardless, we need to do the right thing with that building and believe me, I want to see the lights on in that building. I'm just making sure that we have that feasibility study that involves the stakeholders. And maybe this involves a workshop. I don't, I don't know. I'm just kind of talking it out with you, but just making sure that we're, we're getting all, all voices involved on it.
Certainly. And I will just say to that point that the programming that was proposed in this presentation that we expect to occur in that space is based on the current need within the department. Now, just again, in conversations with our Recreation Team is they continually evaluate their programming in terms of what they're offering, what are the registrations looking like for those particular classes? And so I, I certainly see there to be an opportunity as we continue this process.
So a couple of things. First, thank you for meeting me there. I went, Chris and Steve yesterday to just check, check it out and talk about some of the issues I had raised earlier, parking and so forth. And I'm happy to say that I think some of them were sort of on the same page, at least in relation to the comment and you know, maybe butting out a little bit like on behind the building, that kind of thing. And I do think that the primary point of this is, is the stabilization of the building. And I think that we have tried for, I think sometimes in some of the conversations, I think people either are not aware or forgotten the extent to which we have tried to have this building utilized. So we have, you know, it was given to us when it was, when it reverted back to the town, it was in deplorable condition. And that is something that once the council and the administrator realized that, made sure it didn't happen again with the other two buildings. And, but it happened and it created a lot of damage, you know, with water damage and so forth in Wally School and it's made it prohibitively expensive for anybody to take on. People have tried, we've, we've done requests or proposals, but we've had no one respond at all. Where we've had, you know, organization respond and say, I would love to do this, but no one will fund it. And so I think that if it's ever going to be utilized for anything, it needs to be fixed and put in place so that it continues to stand for another hundred something years. So I think that's the most imperative part of it and that is something that we have talked about for years with, when we had the bond issue, the original bond issue for public buildings and continue to do it and continue to work on that. So I think that is a very important part. I'd like to rather than call it a senior center, I'd like to see maybe like adult services or just town services. I mean, there's a whole lot of interesting things out there that, you know, like aging in place. Nobody's really doing aging in place in, that I know of in Bristol. And that's something that is, you know, there's a lot of resources, I believe, out there that people will come in, take a look at your home, you know, just to be able to funnel through this location. I think we've talked about different times where the Parks and Rec could do it or the Senior Center, you know, just have a group of kids or people willing to help people shovel or rake, that kind of thing, that we can just make one phone call and say, hey, who's on that list that I could maybe call and have them help me on like a clearinghouse. And I think that that would be some really good services be able, be able to do that. And I think some of them may be little history things or other things. I mean, their recreation is really good. And then I think the one thing that I did hear And then I think the one thing that I did hear in one conversation yesterday was how come we don't do enough more stuff for kids at Quinta Gamblin? And I think maybe if we're able to free up, now I understand like right now it's nine to five, that could change down the road if we needed to. If we're able to free up some of that space where, as you gentlemen pointed out to me, you know, it's going to be the ceiling height, you can't really do basketball at Wally School. See, I do pay attention, right? And you know, I really thought about it, but yes, I guess that's a good point. So, you know, you'd be free up some space at Quinta Gamblin, maybe we can do some more youth activities there in the early evenings, move some of these programs maybe for the early evenings. A day or two a week over to Wally School down the road. So I think there's a lot of potential use for it. You know, there's always been, I mean, the comment is I don't want to say heavily used, but pretty heavily used. I mean, his little league is there all the time in in the spring, you know, various other recreational leagues at the basketball court, parents with kids are there all the time. You know, there are various other functions that are sponsored are held on the common and just look at it. I mean, I think it's in our packet. Is that where I saw it or saw it somewhere? On the Fourth of July list of all the things that are already planned for next year of every, you know, the year coming, and it's just a lot of stuff up going on there. So I think there's there is a need to have a building there that is a community and we just can't keep letting this bill this building go down to rack and ruin. I mean, that is the bottom line on it. We just have to get it fixed and we have to bite the bullet because every time we're doing it. We put it off, we're hoping somebody's going to come along and want to find some big funding or some big person with big money's got great ideas. You know, it's just costing us more and more and more as we as we delay. And we are limited. I think people have to keep in mind as well that we are very limited in what we can do at that location. Because of the because of its being on the town comp. And so there's a lot of restrictions that cannot be done, it cannot be made into senior housing, it can't be made into apartments. And look at some of those buildings, and if you've been upstairs, particularly in Byfield, I mean, look at some beautiful roof lines, you look at beautiful woodworking, you're like, that'd make a great apartment, but you can't do it, we can't do it. So we have to like, you know, deal with what we have. And I think it's been what? You know, a good probably eight, seven, eight years, if not 10 years that we've been trying to get someone to take this building on and do something with it, and we haven't been successful. So I think we just need to do it. And I think this is, the timing is right in the sense that you know, we have the bond money and we also have other federal resources that have come on that have come in because of COVID relief and so forth. That's my thought on the building. And, you know, I think the last my 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 commentary last time it was first proposed, I think it came, I think we had to do a little bit with coming out of the blue. I mean, that had not been it never been, this building had been talked about being upgraded, being stabilized. Maybe when we were doing the thinking beta spaces at the other buildings that this would become one of those spaces. I think it was taken by surprise that all of a sudden it was going to be, I mean, they've been charter school proposed, been a whole lot of stuff. I had not heard a senior center, resource center in the past. And I think that can potentially be a heavy use that needs to make sure that the parking and that the neighborhood is respected as well. So.
Mr. Chairman, if I might have a second here. Well, thanks, Chris, and and I know some of you know that I've had a little bit of mixed feelings about some of the use of of the building. And I feel like I'm starting to come around a little bit to maybe some of the uses to which this building can be put in terms of a community resource. So one thing I'd like for you to maybe share with us a little bit would be, can you just talk a little bit more about maybe activities in that building that could appeal to folks that are outside of the senior population?
So for the purposes of this presentation, you know, I prepared the information on recreations offerings that they currently have. You know, what I would say is if it's something that the recreation department is getting input on from the community as to, hey, we really want you to put this on, or if a resident goes to them and says, you know, hey, we want to partner with you with to put this on. They have a form. And what they do is they'll work with that individual to schedule the programming, figure out what the cost might be. And, you know, determine if there has like a cost sharing agreement that needs to be made. And then the rec department will partner with that person to advertise and promote it out to the community members. So I would imagine that, you know, any future program or interests can follow that same path. It's proven to be very successful for recreation department. You know, just as a person who goes there myself, there's sometimes where it's it's bopping, so. Yeah, I think they're definitely open to the discussion, but I would, I'd refer to our parks and rec department on maybe specific things that they could take on.
So so there would be potential for families that live around that area to get together and say, hey, look, it'd be really cool to have, you know, this activity for maybe kids at a certain time or something like that in one of the meeting rooms or something like that. But there's a process for working through the parks department to do something like that.
So similar to how our recreation department works now. You know, residents can go in and rent spaces or they can reserve spaces at the recreation center, at our sports complex, at our parks, that's how we deal with, you know, events that come into town. I would envision this center would also serve a similar purpose if they want to be used for other types of events. I think as we have it proposed, the programming portion that we're going to be advertising first is going to be senior, the senior related. Really emphasizing Mary Ann's role there and her coordinating that effort.
And like other things, like there'll be a cooling and warming center there, that's going to be open to the general public. If there's ever any heat events or winter events or or anything like that, I guess one of the other questions I have in addition to that would be have we like, is a place like that, will we, will, you know, will it be able to withstand like storms and things like that as in? You know, will we have a generator there or will there be plans to, you know, do something like that in case? You know, everything hits the fan and we need a place for people to go that are in that part of town.
Yeah, so part of the proposal would be to look at implementing a generator there. On the concept design that I presented, we also included a kitchen in case we need to prepare you know, food for that purpose or have a prep space. And I guess to the point about, you know, will it be still standing and will it stand up to a storm?
It's been there, it's been there over a hundred years.
Yeah, I didn't mean the building.
Another hundred.
I I didn't mean the building. I just want to make sure about the power. So will the power stay on? So ours, I know that we have nine to five on the hours. I imagine that that'll be adjustable. I know that seniors, they're not just going to events from nine to five anymore. Some of them are working part time. Some of them like to go to events afterwards. And if we do want to attract intergenerational seniors, then I imagine that, you know, some of those adjustments might be able to be made. None of this is all set in stone.
And I and I will say with regards to the hours of operation, so at our recreation center currently, which I'll just say like a weekend, for example, you know, their culture over there is when they work with those instructors, those third party instructors, it's all hands on deck. So, you know, they have keys, they go run the program, they do the cleaning. And it's not necessarily that we're staffing the office at that given time. But whether it was a special event or it was something where we saw demand or our recreation department saw that demand. After this first period, I I certainly think it's open discussion, but I think for the hours we're proposing here, I think we really were mindful of you know, the neighborhood and with the other uses that go on nearby.
And I know the chairman touched on it a little bit and, you know, he had talked about maybe the name of the the center or the building or whatever we'll be naming it. And, you know, certainly, you know, I did a little bit of research into this and I know that some communities across the United States have been thinking about maybe moving beyond the term senior center or the nomenclature senior center and starting to adopt more contemporary names. So, you know, some of the ones that popped up, and this is places that are close to us like Plymouth, Massachusetts, Barnstable, you know, a lot of places in Massachusetts, but Center for Active Living, you know, that really encompasses intergenerational folks to be able to use a building like that or to feel welcome in a building like that. Center for Healthy Aging, I know Mary kind of touched on that a little bit, aging in place. Bristol Social Center, Bristol Living Life Center, I can go on and on. There's there's a lot of great names out there. And, you know, certainly I just hope that we'd be open to you know, finding the name that fits the best for that building. So, thank you.
Just wanted to say like one thing, and there will be space in in Reynolds, but when Aaron asked that question, just the thing that popped into my head was you know, some of the some of the workshops, you don't need a giant space, but just workshops on historic preservation. We've sat here many, many times, talked about how can we help people who have to do like windows or, you know, and that and that we need to be a little bit more out there and how showing people what the resources on how to do it. There have been over the years, a few things in this building. And, you know, so like with everybody eventually will be sort of located there, you know, between Reynolds and Wally and you know, there may be other things, it's still going to be a town building. And so things, other other types of activities with other departments could be there. I mean, you could have you know, like a whole, you know, I think there was already some workshops on the trees of the town common. You know, and that's, so you could do like a little bit more with that, go inside, have some, you know, refreshments, kind of talk about it, then go out and actually look at the stuff in the area. I mean, I think there's a potential for a lot of activities that also relate to like culture and present and his in preservation and his in history, historic preservation in our area, particularly in the downtown, because a lot of things, there've been a lot of sort of entrepreneurial people who have taken on the walks and things like that, that that people can sign up for. And there is a huge collection of historic houses, a lot going on, and that's, you know, between our historical society, there's just a lot of like points that could, you know, touch points for this particular building that could make it accessible to people to be able to go in and maybe add a dimension to whatever it is they're already doing.
And Councilwoman, I think you make a good point, but we also need to understand the need as well. And whether those activities are warranted, right? And whether if we don't need the whole building, can we lease a floor of the building? Can we make it partially income property as well? So it can kind of give us twofold. I was looking at the Chris, I was looking at some of the expenditures for utilities and fourteen thousand dollars and and I was just curious too, is the basement going to be functional at all as well on that? And I'm just thinking about ways we can, if we learn our feasibility study is that some of these activities aren't, we don't need the whole building. Is there ways we can carve up the building, make it income?
Yeah, so the recommendation from our engineering firm is to convert the space into storage. I know just in discussions with our social services director is he does a lot of activities, especially around the holidays with regards to getting resources out to those families in need. And I guess he apparently uses a lot of workspace. So that actually would be, that space would be an asset to him, that storage space. You know, however, I would, you know, as we go into the schematic design, I would really lean on Bruce Thorne to figure out the best use and the buildup of that, that basement. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then mo- most of the activities, like exercising, would that take place in the dining room? It looks like that's the biggest with the tables just be cleared aside for people to move around or?
So all the spaces, you know, as we're proposing would be the flex space. Now, I would say that again, depending on class sizes, you know, really any of those spaces could accommodate it, but first four, second four, but I would lean on the recreation department to figure out exactly the configuration of those those classes within the building.
Tony? Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, I agree with Mary. It's been about at least eight, possibly 10 years that we've been looking at that for all kinds of options as to how we can best make use of Wally School. And I can tell you from experience from touring the building, not purely recent, but a little while ago, and we have quite a bit of damage had been done to the point that one of my feet went right through the floor. That's how bad it was. So that being said, I I think it's time and I think we all in agreement that we need to to really reinforce the building and to bring rehab the building as as quickly as possible. The longer we wait, the longer, the more damage is going to occur in that building. There is no doubt in my mind on that one. As to the scheduling, I know we've talked about all these things, rooms and all of that, but I see it as some way evolving. You know, in some way, you know, some of the activities there, I mean, the space will be there and many, you know, people are going to go, oh, I never really thought of using Wally School, but here it is, you know. I have a question. So right now, the the Wally School will fall under with department, Mr. Administrator. Who would have oversight of that building?
It would be a recreation department. So the the need is we're out of, we're we're a little bit short on floor space because of our success at recreation. The Quinta Gamble is Quinta Gamblin Community Center is very successful. It's a healthy, happy place where people exercise and socializing. But the unfortunate part of it, and we're going to navigate through it, is where the traditional programming, the youth basketball, the gymnasium sports, tennis, indoor pickleball. Those are suffering in the future when the pandemic ends and we get through this because of our 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 programming is so healthy and robust there. The other issue we have is during the summer camp, it's difficult to send our campers up to the Quinta Gamblin because we have plenty of programming going out there. So the need right now is low impact space, and that's where Wally School really fits the bill. It's got fairly high ceilings, structurally, it's fairly sound, although it needs some repairs. And it's in a downtown location, which is accessible to many of the seniors that take part in those activities. So the need here is is two major needs. One of them is we got to preserve the building. The timing, the why now, well, we've you've heard it, the the ARP funds a million dollars that'll go towards the HVAC and some of the upgrades. We have a CDVG grant for an elevator. And very shortly, you're going to find that we have a need for successful programming to continue the youths, the youth sports, which are so critical and also the healthy senior exercise program. So this is really not to not to duplicate duplicate what's currently being done at Benjamin Church Senior Center. And I know we just, I think we just reassured, hopefully we reassured Benjamin Church when you just did the five year pilot. But this is only to continue our services with our existing personnel, not to add personnel. We already have the personnel, we already have the programming. So I I think, I don't know if I answered your question, Tony, but.
No, you know, you did, you did. You actually answer who was responsible for the building. And obviously, as I pointed out, I mean, we can talk about chairs here and that there and all of that, but it's all about evolving, you know, in some way, you know. Because as things have evolved, and as you pointed out, with the pandemic and, you know, what are the needs? How do you adjust? How do you shift services, you know, from one building to another? But the the need has has demonstrated.
While I'm speaking, Mr. Chairman, one other point that has developed. We've we've started some negotiation, some dialogue with our Lady Montcomel and the parish school council has recently met, and they are interested in space to rent or lease in some form, haven't been, haven't discussed terms or nothing concrete, but there is interest in the second floor for our Lady Montcomel. So that would be in consideration when we come back to the council again. The plan would either include that or a lease agreement, obviously, for you, the council will consider. I'm not definite, but we are aware of it now, and I just wanted to get that out in the open that it would be the second floor could be used for you know, school purposes, which would which would keep the activities to a minimum on the first floor.
Certainly, it would be ideal. After all, it is a school or has been a school, could continue to be a school if necessary, part of it, you know.
Yeah, so so and I think the councilman lay asked if there was engagement. So right along, I I have been speaking, the members of the public today alone, at least half dozen, almost maybe a dozen people who called and I spoke to today. There is a great deal of excitement about getting the building up in back viable again. There's a lot of history there. There is some reservations, we will be upfront, that we're going to duplicate what's already successful at Benjamin Church, and that that is not the goal here. The goal is to continue what we find to be very successful, which is those low impact activities, Zumba and chair yoga and a lot of our crafts. Our human services director is going to be more readily accessible now downtown, he does the emergency dial-a-program, he works with the police department on the Knox Box Program. I think he said last meeting, a hundred twenty, approximately a hundred twenty of his clients live in the downtown area, and that census tract. So, be a great opportunity to leverage the grant funds right now that we're getting. We have to spend the money regardless, the building is failing, every year we wait, it's more and more expensive, architects can tell you that. Let's leverage the, 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 the grant funds right now and fill a need right now, and that is the expanded services that recreation offers that are successful. Not adding employees. I would say just about all, or the majority of those programs are run by instructors that come in, so they're, they're private contractors that come in. It's a, they charge a minimal fee for the classes, for most of them, two or three dollars, or whatever it is, I'm not exactly sure, but that, that covers the expense, so there's no revenue on it, and Julie Gaucher is on this call, she can explain how that works. And again, to answer your question, we'd be totally under the Department of Recreation with an office there for our welfare director, human services director, and also the police department would have a small office there for their programming and, and their police, the senior liaison officer could work out of there.
Well, I think you all covered it, did a wonderful job. At the last meeting, I had mentioned that I write very few letters to the Phoenix. One of them I did was, and I mentioned this before, probably like 14 years ago, something like that, and it talked about not doing anything with the buildings downtown. I bring that up because I think it's important note, and all of you have mentioned this, in some, in a great and some little, nothing happens in a vacuum on this. If you look at this project funding breakdown, there is potential sale of public property. If you look at our agenda and follow along, and I know you all have, but I just wanted to point this out to the public, is that I six is Bristol Warren Regional School Committee reason counsel to accept the return of Oliver School from the school district. That is the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is used as a placeholder here, we don't really, I mean, obviously, we have an idea of exactly what it's worth, but a sale is when you actually know what it's something is worth. The sale of that property, the sale of a recent home that the town has owned for quite a long time on Naomi Street, other sales of property, the improvements of Reynolds School. So, when we talk about this building and we talk about those improvements, it's been covered, it's worth saying it again, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of community development block grants, one million dollars of ARPA funds, one point eight million dollars is the borrowed amount, and we'll talk about that just in a moment, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of a sale of a building. Not only is that sale of the building used for this, but property taxes are garnered from that ultimately. And the, on that one, the town does not have a direct expense, but certainly the school had a direct expense, which the town funds in great, in great dollars, right? So, we will see benefits of that because the school sees benefits of that, the less money they're spending on those things, the more they can spend on education. Naomi Street sale brings property tax, brings people to Bristol, there's other sales. There's improvements that we're doing to the buildings downtown. I love, and I'm, I'm not shy about this, I love the improvement about, of this building. I love some of the conversations that's already happened, talking about, yes, the priority is senior services here, but there is peripheral benefit for all. When senior services, when some of those programs can be held there, then there's additional space at Quinta Gamble, and there's additional programs that can happen for youth. The administrator pointed out that he's been talking with Mark Carmel School. Is that a possibility to second floor? Darn it, I'm absolutely open ears on that. First floor, what we're talking about. I think it's wonderful, I think it's appropriate. I, I told you I wanted to come back to those dollars for a moment. The administrator and I were talking a bit earlier, and I, and I know Julie's on the call and she can confirm this, we were talking about, what does this really mean? What is, it's three point eight million dollars, what does that mean to taxpayers? For a valued home of three hundred and fifty, I didn't say it would sell for that, it's just the assessed value, three fifty, it's about sixteen dollars a year is what that costs. And what does sixteen dollars a year? It's borrowing, it's a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars put into everyone's share, so I'm going to use a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar valued house ballpark. Say sixteen, it's actually a little less than that, but I'll say sixteen. So, that's what it costs each taxpayer. What do we get for that? We get a building that's our responsibility to improve, it's been way too long. And this council, this administrator in this town know our responsibility and want to take the next step, and I hear full agreement on it. The next step for us is to take that next step, and certainly before we do that, part of this agenda includes B, which is the board of directors, Benjamin Church wanted to ask questions and also share, and I'm happy to open that up just in a moment. Before I do that, I just, hats off to my colleagues, you kind of hit all the, the salient points. And Aaron, I do agree with you, I don't really care what we call it, I just want to make sure that it conveys the right idea, and I think that was your point also. Whatever it is, I'm not looking to duplicate services, I don't have time, and I don't want to spend taxpayer dollars to do that. Neither do you. What we do want to do is make sure that the services that are being used are enhanced, and that, as I said, nothing happens in a vacuum. When we open this up, we can bring in more youth programs, we can bring in other programs. And I think that is so, so important, and I know we've all heard back from the public, I know I've heard from a lot of people, as the administrator has, that they're very excited about this. Yes, there's apprehension, there should be, it's a lot of money. But I can tell you that we take this council, this administrator, take this all seriously, we take the time with it. Do we have all the answers? No, and that's okay. What I mean by that is there are opportunities that we're not thinking of, that will be taken advantage of by this building being improved. So, all right, so before I open it up to the next step, I want to make sure the council didn't have any more comments. Okay, so is the, is Maria Ursini on the call?
Looking right now, taking a second. I don't see Maria, but I do see users that says Benjamin Church.
I would, let's give that a shot.
All right. Should be coming up shortly.
This is the clunky part on Zoom, we all apologize, I know it takes an extra minute.
They should have access to turn on the camera and microphone.
Oh, there we are. We can't hear you yet.
Can I hear us?
Oh, now we can hear you. If you could both state your names and, full names and addresses for the record, please.
Absolutely, my name is Maria Jority, and I'm from twenty-one Greenway Drive, Bristol, Rhode Island.
My name is Maria Ursini, and I'm at forty Kingswood Road in Bristol.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by thanking you for the opportunity to speak on this very important issue. The reason for the petition is to discuss this proposed plan and request that a vote be postponed until a broader community-based discussion can take place. At the time of this petition, we were not privy to any revisions to the presented plan. The revised, revised plan was not available until late yesterday. After a number of requests and meetings, we could not speak of the plan and were denied a copy, even though the revisions are dated back to November, and the work has already begun in the building. We as the hub and senior center for senior services in Bristol since nineteen seventy-two feel that the town's plan for the use of the Wally School as a community resource center is in itself a good idea. To utilize this building for the benefit of the community and its residents will be advantageous to many. Our concerns arise when it is stated that it will be specifically known as a resource in a senior center. Senior centers where the concern comes in, as the hub for senior services, we are the epitome of success. A nonprofit is well-known throughout the state, and we are respected and called upon to share our expertise and successes in our diverse programs from the many organizations that we network with, many here in Bristol and noted in your plan. In meeting with the town's liaisons and staff members at our request, and after listening to the presentation at the council meeting of December first, it was evident that there really is no specific plan in place for senior services, other than to catch the overflow of programs currently crowding the recreation department. This is of great concern to us. When addressing our confusion at these meetings, we were not given any clarity as to what would be offered to enhance what we offer here at the Benjamin Church Senior Center. Instead, we were assured that everything would remain as is. It was stated that the only change would be this, that some of the services from Asylum Road would be housed at the Wally School. This creates an atmosphere of confusion, not only for us as an entity, but the certain, certainly for the many seniors who will now be set yet in another direction. Included in this plan is the resource pot, which would consist of the Bristol Police having space there, and also the social services department. So why incorporate a senior center in the equation? This creates issues in so many areas that have not been presented. To name a few, let's begin with the sustainability. How will the town continue to support this new senior center and our own nonprofit as they assured us? Can this council honestly say that we will not be affected? Then there are staffing, utilities, duplication of service, et cetera. Not to mention the burden this neighborhood will have to endure with all the new activity going on. How will it affect the surrounding nonprofit organizations? Will these programs take away from other small businesses offering the same services? These are questions that you, our counselors, should be asking as our guardians. Our main concern is the senior part. We will refer back to our mission, which is always to promote health, dignity, and quality of life throughout the journey of aging. We have worked endlessly and tirelessly for many years at keeping our seniors in the forefront. It is important to us that they are always aware, engaged, and part of what is going on. Can you honestly say that you have asked for their input with respect to this plan? It is difficult to support a program that we feel will take away from all of the years of experience and knowledge accumulated here for the past fifty years. Our most important question to you is if this plan is all for and about the senior population, then how will the town incorporate us in this equation? Not surprising is the fact that you mentioned our collaborating partners such as East Bay Food Pantry, Bristol Hess, Franklin Court Assisted Living, in both of your proposals, yet the Benjamin Church Senior Center, the hub for the senior services, is not mentioned and is excluded. One has to wonder what your intention here really is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Was there questions?
At this time, we don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have discussed. Sorry, I won't, I, I can go through this, I think I'll just put a nice little bow on it, is we've discussed cost, we've heard some concerns that were just expressed by the Benjamin Church Senior Center. We've talked about, in fact, if I may, a lot of those concerns that were expressed, we addressed before, and I know it was a written statement, so and that actually heartens me that we're actually dealing directly with those concerns. One of them was, that I heard was, how is it going to affect them? And I think I can respond to that one, it's going to affect them, but it's going to affect them positively. I know that their tenant, one of their tenants, is to take care of seniors. We are the elected officials of the town, we couldn't agree with you more. And our focus, and I can speak for my colleagues on this, is if we can enhance those services, take care of a building that is our responsibility, offer enhanced services to all the public, make the public safer by doing all of this. I, I am, I am unabashedly supportive of this. Now, let me be really clear on that, is that I also have my eyes open. So as things progress, if we were to get information about triple the cost, I'm making that up, then obviously, not to damn the torpedoes, we make good decisions here. But based off the information that's in front of us, and the immense amount of work that was done on this, I still support this. And I can tell you that there was also a concern expressed about, did you, have you talked to seniors? Full stop, yes. I've talked to a lot of seniors myself, I know my colleagues have, you've all expressed in different ways of talking to the public, we don't do this in a vacuum, as I mentioned earlier. I understand there, the concerns that were expressed. I disagree with most, well, I'm sorry, that's not fair, I disagree, I think we've expressed, or we've addressed those issues. I think I got most of them, if I didn't, please colleagues, correct me if I'm wrong. So, so if there is nothing, I, it would seem to me our next step would be if we all agree that we could have a motion to the, complete the reserve, excuse me, the renovations. And also, with the information that the administrator shared about the potential of Mark Carmel School being interested in the second floor, obviously, that changes the plan, that makes it in some ways less expensive, of course, it, it changes what we would propose completely for the second floor. So maybe we would have a motion to complete renovations, and also empower the administrator to continue negotiations and conversations with Mark Carmel School. And let me just be clear on their behalf, I haven't spoken with them, I know the administrator has. They did not commit to anything, I don't want to give the impression that they did, they are interested, we've talked on a very ten thousand foot level, so please, I'm not putting words in their mouth, please don't take it as they're moving in next week, okay? So, if, if this council is comfortable, that would be my suggestion, and I'm open to whatever motions are being proposed. Your mic's on.
Thank you. I, I agree with you, I mean, we need to continue to explore all options, you know, as I had pointed out before, it's evolving when it comes to programming. You know, that's one, two, you know, and the points that Maria Jority pointed out, you know, certainly, those are some of the things that need to be considered as we move forward. The, to the, the program is, I had one more point, forgot, but I'll pass on.
Come back to you.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, yes, I do recall, if you don't mind, yes, that's what happens when you turn sixty-six, and you forget your glasses home, you can't hear well.
But you can't hear well because your glasses are at home.
You picked up on that one pretty quick. No, but we just need to continue to explore the options that are maybe available to us, you know. But definitely, we need to move forward with the restoration of the building ASAP. Yes, I'll make that into a motion.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second, I do not want to put words in your mouth, is it generally what stated, which is continue with renovation?
Yes.
And, and.
That's to include all.
Okay.
Correct.
And so there was a motion seconded by Mary, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I one, and this is Council Clerk Kadirro, me, in regards to a budget workshop schedule for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three.
Motion to accept the schedule as stated.
The second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to accept the schedule. Any discussion?
This is again, a pretty exciting time, it's always an exciting time to work the budget, isn't it? So, we're looking forward to it, I know, by a few nights, but we'll make it through.
Fun nights.
This is of course, available to the public, but it's, what's on our, in front of us is Monday, March twenty-first, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of that week, and then the following week, Monday, March twenty-eighth, Wednesday, March thirtieth. And then there is additional dates on there if, if needed, depending on how the discussion goes. Typically, the discussion is, is to the point, but we have taken advantage of those extra days. What is not here, as far as I know, is we also have JFC, which would not be included with this, to be clear. But that's also a massive part of our discussion.
And I will note that the meeting participation, it does say that it's, the information is to follow, depending on what the governor's rules are at that time, so I will update that once we know what happens closer to that timeline.
It's a great point, thank you. All right, so we had a motion and a second to approve any other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just a quick question, oh, times, I'm sorry, the times, yeah, I apologize. No, they are there.
I won't make you guess.
I was looking at the top instead of looking for the columns, you know, but I do see it at six thirty. Bring your supper.
The next item on the agenda is I two, and this is public notice for CRMC from Andrew Dixon and Sarah Casellas of sixty-four Turning Mill Road, and the project is located at forty-four Papa Squash Road, which requires response before January twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, we do have the recommendation from the harbor master attached.
This would just be receive and file, if my memory is correct.
Yeah, motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, receive and file, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda. So Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I three, and we have Michelle Hughes, the Chair of the East Bay Chamber of Commerce, and this is a presentation and updates of effort to support the Bristol residents and small businesses.
Chris, could you give Michelle access?
She is coming online now.
Okay, so I understand Michelle is on the agenda tonight to take a few minutes to share some of the successes East Bay Chamber of Commerce has had, or maybe that our Bristol residents have felt through the East Bay Chamber of Commerce. Michelle?
Just trying to, there we go.
There you are.
So, good evening, everyone, thank you so much.
Good evening.
Me. And it's been wonderful listening to everything that's going on, and I'm learning a lot of your process in town. So I appreciate being with you tonight. First of all, so my business is in Over in Warren on Medicom Ave. And I've been there at that location about seven years. And I previously lived in Bristol probably about fifteen years ago, and I loved it. So you can take the girl out of Bristol, but you know, I still kind of want to be back, I love the community. And I will say you do so much for the community in the form of, you know, supporting the businesses, how beautiful everything is, and respect for the history of the town, and I really appreciate that. The East Bay Chamber of Commerce serves the East Bay, Barrington, Bristol, and Warren. And in each town, our goal is to collaborate and to ask you, how can we help you? What do you need from the chamber, and is there anything that, you know, we can support you in? We have a ticket to dine, it's fabulous if anyone likes to go out to eat. And I wonder if you've dined in those igloos that were out in the heat of COVID last year. Those were a result of a partnership with Ocean State Air. And there was a grant for eighty thousand dollars, and all of the restaurants that wanted those igloos received them free of charge, and we facilitated that with them. We also passed out a lot of PPE during COVID, and we continued to have our meetings online and our events online, like everyone else did. We do support the local business groups, the BMA, and we put everything on our calendar that we find. Suzanne and our office will go out and look for events that are going on from Linden Place to the town. So we're always there to help promote what you guys are doing. We do have someone assigned especially special to social media. And all of our numbers have grown in that respect, so as far as getting the word out about events, we're definitely seeing those numbers increase. I guess I'm very happy to have Chris, who sits on our board with us, he attended a lot of meetings, and we've learned so much. He's a big part of our collaboration with Mount Hope High School. And we're really making a lot of change there. Just seeing how the local high school can help the businesses in this area. So we host a manufacturers group. It's a pretty exclusive group, East Bay Manufacturing is part of that, Jade. There's quite a list of local manufacturers who are employing people, and they're trying to connect with with new employees, so we're doing a lot of effort in that area. So I'm just happy, oh, let you know we're here. We did support the bridge effort over by Sip and Dip, we wrote a letter to support the position of the folks in town that wanted to keep that open. So anytime there's anything that we can do or assist with, I just want to let you know we're here. That's it for now. Any questions?
No.
I'm sorry, I don't have any questions, but certainly thank you for all that you do, okay, in supporting all the businesses. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Chris, thank you for what you do there, too. Seriously, so, and Michelle, thank you for highlighting those points, and thank you for taking some time with us tonight.
My pleasure, thank you.
Could I have a motion to receive and file, please?
So I'll move. Second.
There's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to receive and file, with thanks, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
So Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I four, and this is bound, bond council in regard to the amended and restated reimbursement and borrowing resolution for the series twenty twenty-two bonds.
Well, hey, Julie.
Hello, everybody.
Just came out of nowhere, that's magical.
Timely. So the resolution before you this evening adds a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the resolution that you saw at the last council meeting. And that is in order to move forward with a property purchase that was also discussed at the last meeting. So this document should look pretty familiar, but we need to just approve a revised resolution for the amount of five million eight hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars.
So Julie, it just, I'm sorry, I may have missed that part, is that I know that this was restating what we'd already gone through. Did you just say that, and we were also including additional funds for the open space that we decided to take the next step on?
Correct, so that would be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase to the bond issue.
All right. What's this council's pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All two minutes of you, Julie, thanks for joining.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I five, and this is a resolution from the Bristol Fourth of July celebration for the twenty twenty-two events.
Motion to accept the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to accept their discussion. I'll just point out that we always say this, but it's, this is how much they're doing all the time, right? The day after the parade, they start. And this is just another example of the efforts made by this committee, and it's a great example of a lot of the communities in town. Thank you. So we had a motion, a second to support the resolution, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I six. And this is the Bristol Warren Regional School Committee in regards to the, or for the council to accept the return of Oliver School from the school district.
So I asked for this to, actually, I worked with the administrator to have this on the agenda. This council discussed all that got us up to this point. We had some recent discussion on how it affects other projects in town. The goal here was to have it official on our agenda, showing that it is now back in the town's responsibility, and also to take the next step so we can empower the administrator and staff, I would say, to take the next step here, and does that, Mr. Solicitor, what would be our next step in regards to, as we've talked about, of selling the property? I stepped a little bit too quickly there.
No, of course, first of all, you'll have a motion to accept the return of the school, so that then becomes property of the town once again. And then, once you do that, after the proposal comes presumably from the administration, you go through the same process of putting the property up for sale that you've done in the past, with putting out an RFP basically, or an RFQ, see what's out there.
Perfect. Can we do that in, this is part of this acceptance of this, or we would need at our next meeting to?
Since this is pretty specific, I would have it on the next agenda.
I would rather do that and take all correct steps, okay?
And I'll, and I'll help Melissa with how it should be on the agenda and what the action taken will be.
Outstanding, thank you. Counsel?
So I'll move.
So we're making a motion to accept the return? Follow school?
And?
Yes.
I'll second that then.
Okay, so motion made, kind of by both, and seconded by both, that's okay. To accept the return of Oliver School. And we'll leave it up to Melissa to choose who actually did it.
Should we slip a coin out?
I just had a quick question for the administrator on the school. Just wanted to make sure that we, the building is winterized and looking good for, you know, when they left it, I just hate to see us inherit, you know, problems, you know, in another month when it gets real cold.
Will do.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, is there any other discussion?
I think the administrator was.
Mr. Administrator, did you want to add something?
For the next item, I'm sorry.
You're now jumping ahead. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
I'm sup.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Was this about Oliver? I seven, I want to ask if we could revisit I seven, you would pull it forward. I've learned that my mic was off, so I don't think the public heard my report on the take-home tests. I seven.
Be a bad idea.
So I think it is imperative that we do that. Mr. Solicitor, what do we need to do to, do we need to just re-add the agenda item, or?
Since it's already on the agenda, I think you can just hear it again.
Okay, so I'm going to preface it by saying this. This council had a motion in a second to move this particular agenda item forward. And it is so important that we're going to cover it again, it turns, it turns out, the administrator's mic was not, was not, yeah, it was malfunctioning, thank you. So we heard it here, but we don't believe the public did, and it's too important not to cover it again, Mr. Administrator.
So I just wanted to relay local information about the take-home COVID test kits that the community is receiving. The governor recently announced that State of Rhode Island had five hundred thousand test kits. Bristol's allotment by population is six thousand eight hundred and forty. In receiving those free test kits, we have to abide by federal guidelines in eligibility rules. So in essence, we can turn those test kits over to eligible groups, being schools, medical facilities, health equity zones. So in meeting with the fire chief and knowing of some of our needs, in meeting with the school superintendent, we found it important to provide five thousand of those to the local schools. That would be Bristol Warren Regional here in Bristol, and also Our Lady of Mark Carmel. And part of that plan would be to have the kids go home with them during their winter break, so that they can reopen in the, in the, in the school children, will know if they're COVID positive or not. The additional, what's the remaining tests would, test kits would be provided to the Bristol Health Equity Zone, where they'll target those other groups which they have in the past, for example Franklin Court, Benjamin Church, Bristol Housing. There may be some other groups that they're targeting, and that's the team over at the Bristol Health Equity Zone. In addition to those, over six thousand test kits, I just want to inform the public, if they're not already aware, this information are on our website as to where you can also get test kits at no cost. Recently, it was announced that you can get them through your pharmacy with, through your medical insurance, if you have that. There's a testing center at the six fifty-five Medicum Avenue, and appointments can be made at portalri.gov.
Mr. Administrator, we're in Rhode Island, you have to speak in Rhode Islandese, it used to be Bennys, is how you say it.
Bennys across from Fails Farm. And the last place for test kits would be, we encourage everyone to get the federal government test kits through the postal service, and that's covidtests.gov, covidtests.gov. And if anyone needs assistance, so ordering the test kits, Anne Marie, Mary Ann Quinn at Recreation can help, two five three one six one one, two five three one six one one. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Since we went through it again, why don't we get another motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J one, and this is RFP nine seventy, the On Call Electrical Services. The bid was held today at noon, we received four bids in regards to the On Call Electrical Services. The first one was from Wayne Electric, and this is a hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-five cents for an hourly rate. Second one was F and S Electric, Inc., and that was in the amount of a hundred and fifteen dollars for an hourly rate. There was also a rate to be considered outside of normal business hours of seven thirty AM and five PM, and that rate was a hundred and seventy dollars an hour. The third one was AM Electric LLC with ninety dollars an hourly rate and the hundred and fifty hourly rate outside of the seven thirty-five PM. And the last one was EW Odette and Sons, Inc., and that was a hundred dollar hourly rate with a one eighty-two hourly rate outside of the seven thirty to five PM. Let it be noted that Wayne Electric did not provide an hourly rate outside of those regular hours.
Motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to refer to the administrator, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is J two, and this is RFP nine seventy-one, and this is for the redistricting, representing, representing consulting services. The bid was also had opened today on noon, we received two bids, one from Election Data Services in the amount of nineteen thousand. And the second one was ABC Bridge Consulting and Training, Inc., in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred.
I had a conversation with the clerk a little bit earlier today. This isn't referred to the administrator because it specifically deals with clerk's department and redistricting and representing, that's a really tough word to say. Mr. Solicitor, could you speak on that, or did I cover it enough that it's?
No, no, you covered it, and what I would suggest is the motion is that you refer this to the clerk and the board of canvases to act in the best interest.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, good luck saying that word.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is L one, and this is the review and approval of the proposed revision to the Mount Hope Farm bylaws.
Mike?
Yes, so the Mount Hope Farm bylaws, there are several articles which require council approval if they propose to make changes. In this case this evening, under Article Three, there is a proposal which would allow special rates for events sponsored by the town, or events sponsored by indigenous people, et cetera. And that can be managed administratively. I reviewed this, it's gone through review with Diane Williamson's office also. We believe that the amendment makes sense and would request that you approve it so that it can become effective.
Counsel?
I don't see reason for a whole lot of debate, but, you know.
I know that we covered all this, I know that there were adjustments made. Mary, I'm reminded of your request to move away from the five oh one C three, if, and I see that as a aligned item here, or a removed item on that, and it expresses it in a different way and doesn't require five oh one C three, correct, Mike?
That, right, it's any town-sponsored event, is what it comes down to.
And I know we had some other concerns, but those have been addressed now, so. So what's the council's pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
So now would be the call for DD one to be pulled.
Oh, yes, I forgot about that, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and esteemed colleagues, just wanted to bring this up, and I just want everybody to know, in Rhode Island, in Bristol, since we have such a large Portuguese population, that the Rhode Island Day of Portugal is seeking to build and install the Luso Americans Veterans Monument in Exeter, Rhode Island, and so I just wanted to bring every, to everybody's attention, since we have such a large Portuguese population. And really, this, this is going to just remember and reflect on all the men and women who sacrifice, Portuguese men and women who have sacrificed their lives for our freedom. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, and then basically, ultimately, this resolution with these Providence and other towns is going to go to the legislature to ask for financial contribution and support. So just wanted to bring it up, make everybody aware of it, thank you.
Actually, Councilman, I appreciate you doing that. I was actually contacted by one of the individuals from the board as well, you know? But I'm glad that you did pull it out, and certainly, I believe that we But I'm glad that you did pull it out, and certainly, I, I believe that we should support this resolution.
Thank you.
So we just need a motion to that effect?
Okay, I make. Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Is there any other item that we pulled forward?
No, just thank you.
Anyone that we want to go over again? Sorry, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, all in favor? Is there anybody opposed to adjourned? Excellent, fine, good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night.